Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's at 5:30 and time to go. And we're gonna have a roll call by our Assistant City Clerk, Claire Lopez.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
If you'll all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Green is going to lead it tonight.
Please join me in slitting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone tonight that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow the public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed on the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on the agenda cover sheet. And so next, we'll have the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
And we had a closed session, and our City Attorney Darryl Piper will bring us out of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session as described on Item CS1 on this evening's closed session agenda, and no action was taken that is reportable.
Okay, and we have presentations, and then one presentation this evening, and it is Dr. Linda Kimball, Vista Unified School District Superintendent, and Dr. Kyle Ruggles, who is the Vista High School Principal, is going to provide an educational update for us. So, welcome.
Good evening. We are pleased to be here with you. The Vista Unified School District is excited to roll out a series of, quick, I promise, interactions with the city council. We would like to improve communication. We'd like to be a common interactor with the council and just make sure that you know some really great things going on in our district. So, we're gonna give you a quick snapshot of some exciting things going on at Vista High. And I want to start by introducing the new principal at Vista High School. This is Dr. Kyle Ruggles, and I'm gonna turn this over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Kimball. Mayor Ritter, City Council, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about Vista High School. I've got some slides to share with you. This is my first year at Vista High School, and I'm so honored to be able to give you an update on the things that we have going on at Vista High School. In my first year, I've been learning a great deal, trying to get to know all the students, all the students and the staff and community so that we can be successful in our work in transforming what we're doing at Vista High School. As part of the XQ Superschool grant that we received, we are looking at personalizing learning for all of our students and giving students a voice and agency and put the students behind the wheel of their learning. The chance to give students to explore their interests, passions, and becoming self-directed learners is one of the focal points of personalized learning. We want to make sure that we also are focusing in on students' social and emotional well-being. And by doing that, what we're doing is making sure that students feel connected to the school and that there is a champion, adult champion, on campus that can provide support. When I was in Student Support Services, I went to a conference that found out that loneliness, hopelessness, and fear are the biggest threats to school safety. So, we want to make sure that we're building connections with students. And one of those things that we do is through our wellness program, where the teachers build solid connections with their students. We also have houses, which I'll explain in just a little bit, and interdisciplinary teams that our teachers are engaged with with our students. So, this is Vista Cares. This is, before I got to Vista High School, one of the things that we, as a staff, came together with was determine what our values, our beliefs, and our purpose are. This is what we came up with: curious, advocates, resilient, empathetic, and socially emotionally well. So, we are working to develop students who are curious, that are searching for the solutions in a wide variety of different issues worldwide, that they're advocates, that they stand up not only for themselves but for others, and they're advocates for something that they strongly believe in, that's something they've learned about, that they're resilient, that they're able to bounce back from difficulties that come their way, that they're able to, when difficult situations arrive, that they're able to bounce back and become engaged in learning and in their school. Empathetic, that they're able to put themselves in the shoes of others and that they can know what it feels like to communicate with others and know all there is to know about them. And then finally, socially and emotionally well. With the pressures and stress that's going on amongst our students, we want to make sure that they're all having relationships, that they have a working relationship with at least one teacher on campus. Hopefully, there's several adults that they have connections with on campus. The next slide is supportive learning environments. I wanted to let you know a little bit about our house system that we've put in place through the XQ Superschool Grant. We have, since 2012-2013 school year, the percent of freshmen receiving two or more F's in a semester, it was 25% to 33%, which was alarming to us. So, what we wanted to do was pull together a house system for our ninth and 10th graders. We just, we had it in ninth grade last year, and we expanded it into 10th grade. So, ninth and 10th grade has a house system of learning for our students. This means that they share the same three teachers. So, we had, last year, we had four teachers in the house. Now, we have three. So, it went from about 130, 140 students to 100 students in a house. So, within that house, the same teachers share the same students. So, it's kind of like a small school within a school. So, the students are able to work within that house structure of learning. So, we were able to provide these houses for all ninth and all 10th grade students. So, that's our house system of learning. It provides positive relationships and opportunities for students to know more about themselves and know more about their teachers. And then, we also, how do we help students develop tools and understand and manage the various stresses that they face? We want to start a wellness course. And this wellness course is for all of our ninth grade students. And this wellness course, it empowers students to develop and sharpen these behaviors and skills that are important for success in high school and life. So, students will engage in creating supportive learning community, building relationships with each other, resolving conflicts. And the ultimate goal is to teach students to be self-aware and emotionally resilient so that they can develop healthy relationships with others in a productive, positive society. And then finally, we have the Wellness Center, which is for all students across our campus. How do we help students win their challenges, overwhelm their abilities to learn? We have a Wellness Center for all of our students and provides a place for students to become self-aware of what they're doing in classes, to develop relationship skills, and through classroom instruction, they receive restorative practices from their teachers. So, the center helps focus on students helping to manage their own emotions and impulsivity and create empathy and improve their ability to make responsible decisions. What the numbers show from 2017-18, we, our measurement and monitoring department in our school district provided a four-year study on discipline data of incoming freshmen at Vista High School. And over those, since 2014-15 school year, for those three school years, 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, there was a 1.6 reduction in behavioral incidents. Well, when we put the houses and the wellness class in the class of 2021, which is our current sophomores, there was a 59% reduction in the number of discipline incidents, and there was a 90% reduction in students with 10 or more discipline incidents. So, we feel that it was a very significant positive change for us to make sure that the students have the Wellness Center, the Wellness Course, and they have the houses. And then, UCSD conducted a study of our ninth grade students and found that a majority of students indicate they believe Vista High School teachers truly care and believe in them, and then there's a wellness, is well-liked amongst our students, and they find direct links between the course and life outside of school. And then, the Wellness Course is helping students to manage their impulsivity. And then, the impact that we've had, we've, the house structure has created a smaller learning environment for students where they feel more connected to their peers. Many house teams feel more connected to each other, and they're strengths than ever, than the teachers have ever had before in their experience, in their careers. And teachers are given time, space, and opportunity to collaborate with prestigious institutions like MIT and other XQ schools. And then finally, students have the space and time to share their voice and experiences with parents and community members during monthly engagement events. And then, as we move on, is wellness positively impacting our students? Yes, it is. We're providing students, they're building empathy amongst each other and within themselves. They're learning to take responsibility for their action, and they're learning to manage their emotions. But there's still work to do. This was a survey that was provided last year to our ninth graders. 50% of our current sophomores and ninth graders, they need to know, they don't know how to be healthy when they become stressed and overly burdened. So, 50% of our students responded that way. These are freshman students last year, so they're current sophomores. 63% of our students say they don't know how to find someone for help when they become frustrated. That's why we have this Wellness Course, and we want to make sure that every student has a champion on campus, that an adult champion that can help them. And then, 49% say they don't know how to manage their emotions after they get angry. So, we have a great deal of work still ahead of us. And looking ahead, what we're doing is we're working to develop students who are curious, advocates, resilient, resilient, empathetic, and socially emotionally well. Each Vista High School administrator is actively involved in supporting the implementation of the XQ and Personal Learning Academy plans. And then, we have continued partnerships with teachers, working with institutions like MIT. The Education Department developed high-quality, project-based, and interdisciplinary learning. And then, Stanford is doing a survey for all of our current ninth and 10th grade students to check on the progress of our students, understanding their social and emotional growth. And these are all the focus areas of the XQ categories that we want to make sure that all of our assistant principals are doing and all of our assistant principals are engaged with, and so am I. And finally, the school culture is something that I've been really working with everybody on, that every student feels valued, feels connected, and is successful within a strengths-based environment where teacher morale is high and professional relationships are valued, and there's collaboration that is natural and systemic. These are the things that we're really focusing on at Vista High School. And that completes the presentation I have for you this evening. Take opportunity to answer any questions.
I might have questions here, Sophie. Just, Councilmember Green.
All right. First of all, thank you so much for your presentation. This is my sixth year as a parent consecutively at Vista High School, so I've definitely watched the changes, was part of the XQ application, and it's really awesome to see the personalized learning come to fruition. I had a question. First thing I wanted to tell you is, in addition to your teachers, you have some amazing staff on the ground there, as you know. Ms. Mary is like a mom to all of your kids, and Hector Prado is one of your security guards who also coaches the Storm soccer team and several other soccer teams in the community. So, you guys are definitely rooted in the community here. My big question that I had for you is your Wellness Center. I haven't seen it, and I'm wondering exactly what it is, what it entails, and what does it provide for the kids when they come in there after they're frustrated and kind of, you know, how does it improve their day? So.
Well, the Wellness Center is located right next to the Counseling Department. It's right behind the front office there. So, if students, if students need any sort of support with any, anything regarding their, if they're feeling that they need to talk to someone, a counselor, or there is maybe some disciplinary situation that's come up, they're provided the opportunity to go to the Wellness Center, and there are teachers there that help them with their decision-making, help counsel them, help support them. And then, if they need to go see a counselor, they can go see a counselor after that, or maybe they need to see a school psychologist, or we provide the students extra support from the Wellness Center. And then, if after they've been in the Wellness Center for a little bit of time, they can go back to class if the teacher feels that they're ready to go back to class. So, it's a very brief amount of time we want students out of class unless they need some significant emotional and social support.
Gotcha. It's like a triage center per se, where they evaluate where they're gonna go from there.
Yeah, pretty much.
Awesome. And also, I know that you stepped into some really big shoes. The previous principal was the Administrator of the Year, and I have heard nothing but good things. I know you're working your tail off over there. Every time I come, your office is shut and looks like you're in an important meeting. So, thank you for all you're doing for our students over there.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you also for coming out and describing all this. My daughter goes there. She's a sophomore, so she got started in this program as well. And we've seen some good results. This is my sixth year as a parent at Vista High as well, and I've seen some major changes. So, I think this is very positive. My question was actually the same about the Wellness Center. That's something I was curious about. I was working the evening of parent night, so I missed that. And I've got some questions to ask my daughter when I get home. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilera.
Appreciate it.
So, I see no further questions. So, thank you so much for coming and explaining all that to us. It's an interesting concept, and we're looking forward to seeing how you come out on the end of it. So.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council, for having me this evening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going, that was our only presentation tonight. So, with that, we, the next thing on our agenda is our Consent Calendar and their Items C1 through C6. The recommendations of the Consent Calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a Request to Speak card to the Clerk's Secretary, and items removed from the Consent Calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have those six items, and we have, no, we have no, no, nothing from the public. So, if anybody, I would take a motion if no, oh, Councilmember Franklin.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Oh, I have a second? Okay, everybody, cast your votes. Did you have to say something, or?
No.
A second? Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is to receive testimony on the Downtown Specific Plan Amendment. So, the public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an amendment to the Downtown Vista Specific Plan that we initiated back in February of this year. The specific plan area covers about 284 acres. It includes six different planning districts. The plan was initially adopted in 2010 and was last comprehensively updated in 2015. The discussion we started back in February was initiated focusing on some residential neighborhoods that are in the fringes of the specific plan, in the Transit, West Gateway, and Paseo-Santa Fe districts, and I'll cover those individually. So, there were four specific areas within the plan that we reviewed. Those are the Transit Area East, which is east of Santa Fe and north of Vista Village; the Transit Area West, which is west of Santa Fe and north of Vista Village; the West Gateway, which is an area north of Vista Village near Plymouth; and Paseo-Santa Fe-Pala Vista, which is down near Civic Center Drive in Pala Vista. So, I'll cover each district, just kind of roughly to give you an idea of the character of each of the areas. The Transit District East, shown here, is the blocks north of Vista Village and east of North Santa Fe. That includes a Lifeline property, which is in the center there off of Michigan. It's primarily one- and two-story residences, a mix of single-family and multifamily units with partially improved streets. This is kind of a different perspective of the area, kind of giving you an idea of the character. Older, single-family neighborhood with a mix of multifamily, and then the Lifeline Center in the middle. There's a vacant property there off of Palm Drive, which is a city property that's being pursued for development. These are some photos of the area showing a mix of improved and unimproved areas with some sidewalks missing and a few vacant lots. The next area we looked at was the Transit District West. This is the area that's north of Vista Village and west of the Transit Center, east of Camino Corto, includes Terracino and Camina Patricia. Again, one- and two-story residences, an older area, a mix of single-family and multifamily units, mostly unimproved streets in this area. Again, kind of showing the character here, bird's-eye view, and some photos, mostly 24 to 28-foot-wide streets that have no sidewalk curb and gutter, overhead utilities. West Gateway Plymouth is a small area behind Mr. A.'s Center there off of Plymouth and Vista Village. It's a small portion of the plan, but includes one- and two-story residences, mostly single-family. And some photos, again, unimproved streets with overhead utilities. And the fourth area is Paseo-Santa Fe-Pala Vista. This is west of Civic Center Drive, south of Mercantile, along Pala Vista. Again, a fringe area with older, single-family and multifamily units, mostly unimproved streets. The bank property there is in the foreground off of Civic Center, and Pala Vista stretches down to Santa Fe. This shows the street improvements, and again, some overhead utilities and older residential area. So, the current zoning and development standards in all of these four neighborhoods is currently mixed-use, so allows either commercial or residential or both. The maximum density is 40 units to the acre, and the maximum building height is 60 feet. So, the Planning Commission brought to our attention back in February that we should review these areas. So, we went to the Planning Commission for an initial review, got some recommendations. We came to the Council later in February and got final direction. We've revised the plan. Now, we've come back through the process. So, we went to the Planning Commission earlier this month, and they said, "Hey, we want you to follow our directions from February because the Council's recommendations were slightly different." So, I'm gonna present the Planning Commission's recommendations that they initially made, which was their final recommendation, and then the Council's direction that we received back in February, which is what the proposed project that's before you tonight is. If you would like to see some changes based on the direction that we got from the Planning Commission, we can consider whether those are, those can be made on the dais tonight, or we'll have to go back and maybe make some revisions and bring it back to you. I don't want to present both recommendations so that you have the full picture. So, in the Transit District East, the Planning Commission recommendation was to change the land use to residential only in areas that did not front the major streets. That's primarily Vista Village Drive. Maintain a density of 40 units per acre and reduce the building height within that neighborhood to 45 feet. The city council said the same on the land use, residential only in areas not fronting major streets. They recommended that the density be reduced to 30 units per acre within that residential-only area and maintain the building height reduction of 45 feet. So, this is a map showing that neighborhood. The yellow areas show the portions of the neighborhood that would be restricted to residential only, in other words, removing the mixed-use zone. The density in these areas, the yellow, would be reduced to 30 units per acre, and the building height within the entire red area would be reduced to 45 feet. The Transit District West, the Planning Commission recommended a residential land use in a portion of the neighborhood along Camino Patricia, reducing the density to 21 units per acre within that area, reducing the building height to 35 feet, again, within that area, and then reducing the building height overall to 45 feet within the remainder of the zone. The city council's review was to maintain the mixed-use land use designation within the entire area, maintain the density of 40 units per acre, but reduce the building height overall to 45 feet. So, within this area, there's no yellow because the mixed use was maintained. The density was maintained. However, the building height was reduced to 45 feet, but it applies to the entire zone. So, there was no separation or split, but the building height overall within this neighborhood was reduced to 45 feet. The West Gateway Plymouth, this is a small residential area. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to make it residential only, reduce the density to 21 units per acre, and the building height to 35 feet. That's consistent with our highest residential density in our existing zoning. The Council's recommendation was, again, to make it residential only but to only reduce the density to 30 units per the acre and reduce the building height to 35 feet. So, in this neighborhood, the yellow shows it's residential only. The density is reduced to 30 units per acre, and the building height is reduced to 35 feet. The final Paseo-Santa Fe-Pala Vista area, the Planning Commission recommendation was to change the land use to residential only west of Pala Vista and north of Rincon to reduce the density within this area to 21 units to the acre and reduce the building height to 35 feet within this area. The Council's recommendation was the same in land use, to reduce the density only to 30 units per acre in the residential-only area and reduce the building height to 45 feet in the residential-only area. And so, on this plan, the yellow area reflects the change from mixed use to residential only as well as a density change to 30 units to acre and a building height change to 45 feet. The remainder of that neighborhood would be at 40 units to the acre and with a maximum height of 60 feet as currently allowed within the plan. So, to summarize, the revised land use designations are all included in a new map or a revised map that's shown as Figure 2-2. It's in your packet. There's revised density designations, which are included in a new map, shown in your packet as Figure 2-3, and revised building heights, which are also shown on a new map included in your packet as Figure 2-4. And those maps include all of the comprehensive changes that were summarized in the four residential neighborhoods. The staff is also recommending allowing up to 25% parking spaces to be compact spaces measuring eight feet by 16. This would be 25% of the required parking could be compact. The remainder would have to be standard spaces at nine by 19. Would allow some flexibility within this area considering the small lot sizes and the urban type of development that the city's pursuing. And finally, we have a recommendation to include a policy to underground overhead utilities with any new development. This is a citywide policy that we apply for any new site development plan, but it's not specified in this plan, and so we thought it would be best to do so. This is the Figure 2-2, the land use map. This was in the plan already, but there was an additional category added for residential multifamily, which is the orange. And then, you can see the four specific areas that were added that I covered that have been changed to residential only. Again, a new map showing densities at 30 and 40 units to the acre, and the changes are reflected in this plan as well. And finally, the building heights map, which shows the building heights throughout the plan. There were a number of limited building heights in other zones prior to this map, and so it was all put into the map to show specific plan-wide what the height limits are. The staff's review, following the Council's direction, the intent here was to provide improved compatibility with the existing neighborhoods in the area. The changes that are recommended are covered by the program EIR that the city adopted back in 2015 when we comprehensively updated the plan. The changes that are recommended conform with general plan policies to improve compatibility with existing neighborhoods, and those findings are included in the staff report and resolution consistent with state law. As the Planning Commission advised, advisory to the Council regarding amendments to zoning and specific plans, and they have made a formal recommendation to the Council. And with that, staff's recommending adoption of an ordinance, amending the specific plan, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions down here from the mic of the Council? Okay, Councilmember Franklin?
So, I had the opportunity to thank Mr. Conley and Mr. Johnson for taking the time to, we drove through all these neighborhoods and really got into the specifics of it. And after having done that, I think I find more agreement with the Planning Commission's recommendations. Particularly, I noticed the development of some multifamily that really was not at or above the caliber of the existing homes. Didn't bring the area up. And I saw the potential for some poorly-done multifamily to bring that area down. And having recently visited La Mesa, they have some really charming redevelopment that's happened near their downtown where some of the older 1940s homes have, you know, folks have bought them and fixed them up and created a really beautiful neighborhood out of an area that needed some love and attention. And I'd like to see us kind of encourage that. I think it could be a really charming area to live, but it will require taking a step to protect that character and try and encourage it. So, generally, I'm actually in favor of implementing the Planning Commission's recommendations.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, this is more of a...
Sorry, this is more of a question. I got two questions. One for Mr. Franklin right now since he spoke on this. Transit District East, there, the planning commission is recommending a higher density than what city council's recommending, right?
That's correct. There's, I think, one area in that particular instance where they recommended a higher density. The other recommendations were all lower. But I could go back through those and clarify.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like to go over that part. And then if we go back to the Palo Vista, Paseo Santa Fe and Palo Vista, the 30 dwelling units, is that, or what the planning commission is recommending, is that the yellow area or is that what, was that just the area in general?
Yeah, the planning commission was recommending that it be residential only in the yellow area. And that it be 21 units to the acre with a height limit of 35 feet, which is the citywide height limit.
The council was recommending...
Council was amending 30 units to the acre density with a 45-foot height limit.
But still residential only as well?
But still residential only, correct.
So I do recall from our meeting in February where I believe you mentioned that 21 units would be very difficult to develop, not typically...
Based on the lot sizes in this area, it's extremely difficult to get to 21 units to the acre if you consider the setback and parking and open space requirements that are included in our zoning. The downtown specific plan's a little different because it has reduced standards in terms of setbacks and parking, et cetera. So you may be able to get there with that.
You're saying we wouldn't be able to reach 21 even?
Maybe not. Just depending on lot size.
So we wouldn't be able to reach 30 then either?
Depending on the height of the property. So at 30 units to the acre with a height limit of 45 feet, you could probably get to that density. At a height limit of 35 feet, no, there's no way. You probably won't get to 21 units to the acre at that height limit. It just depends on the box you give them to build in.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Green?
And I think that my question was answered. I was asking why they were trying to lower the density all across the board to the 21 units per acre, but it sounds like it's not feasible based off of the height limits to cram that much, that many units into that size box, per se?
The 21 units to the acre is consistent with our highest multifamily zoning density. So that's citywide, the highest density we go to. In the specific plan, it goes much higher, but elsewhere, multifamily zoning max is 21. Maximum building height is 35 feet. So most of the multifamily development you see around the city of Vista meets that character. Two stories, 21 units or less to the acre. Majority of that type of development at two stories, meeting our parking standards, is somewhere between 15 to 18 units to the acre. That's roughly what you get. If you have a really large lot, you can spread it out. You might get higher densities, but generally, it's in that 15 to 18 range. If you allow a higher building height...
Then you can cram more.
You can achieve a higher density.
But that'll kind of affect like Councilmember Franklin said, the character of the area?
Just depends on compatibility, correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I think I agree with that from the planning commission perspective. I also like the 25 percent compact parking option. I think that the age we live in, there aren't people driving around as many huge trucks as they used to, and it might ease our parking restrictions a little bit. So I like that in the underground utility. So thank you for your report.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this report. Very well done. I appreciate it. I will start with the undergrounding. I agree with the undergrounding as well, so thank you for that. I'm just going to go through these, each one, starting with the Transit District East. The planning commission, as we talked about, had residential only for areas not fronting the major streets. I agree with that. I agree with our recommendation to reduce the density to 30 units in residential and maintaining 40 in the mixed-use areas. And the building height, reducing it down to 45 feet. In the Transit District West, pardon me. I like the planning commission's recommendation, going all the way down. Residential use only along Camino Patricia. Reduce the density maximum to 21. Reduce the building height to 35 and then 45 in the mixed-use areas.
So just so I can be clear. What that means is this area that's shown along the Camino Patricia on the west side of the planning zone would be changed to residential only, 21 units to the acre and 35-foot height limit. The area that's to the east over here would maintain a mixed-use designation with a height limit of 45 feet. That was the planning commission's recommendation.
And then our recommendation was to maintain 40 dwelling units.
And a mixed use?
And mixed use.
Correct.
Right. So I'm still agreeing with the planning commission. And then the West Gateway, again, I agree with the planning commission's recommendations. And the only thing there that we had a disparity on was the maximum density, which I prefer the 21 units to the acre. And then same with Paseo Santa Fe Palo. Excuse me. I would go with the planning commission's recommendations on that. And I'm really glad that we're revisiting this. I know that we've gone back and forth and back and forth a few times over the years on our height requirements, on the parking requirements, on the density requirements. And so I'm glad that we're revisiting this and having this conversation. And I appreciate the input from the planning commission and all the work that you and your staff have put into putting this together for us. So thank you.
Councilmember Franklin?
What is the effect on somebody who purchases a home and wants to rehab it in terms of the undergrounding requirement? Would they be...
It's only if they're going to add more than 50 percent of the size of the existing structure.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I think I would be okay with the 21. If Councilmember Rigby, that you were saying that in the... Which district was it that they had increased it to 30? The Transit District? West Gateway?
West Gateway?
So they wanted to reduce the density to 30?
Yes, this was in the Transit East. Let's go back.
Oh, I thought that was the one that the planning commission wanted to increase.
Planning commission wanted to leave it at 40 units to the acre here in the yellow and the council wanted to change it to 30. So that was the direction I got, was to leave it at 30. Commission wanted to reduce the density to 21 units to the acre in some of the other planning areas, which Councilmember Rigby just covered. I can go back through those if you'd like.
Was that your recommendation to go to 21?
So in this one, we would stay at 30 in the residential only. Let's move through them here. In this one, we would change that neighborhood on Camino Patricia that I mentioned on the west side to 21, 35-foot height limit. That was the recommendation. That was the planning commission's recommendation. This one would change to 21 units to the acre, residential only, two stories, 35 feet. This one would change to residential only, 35-foot height limit, 21 units to the acre in the yellow area. That's the planning commission's recommendations.
Did you... So where are we? Councilmember Rigby, did you want to talk again?
I just had a quick question. It seemed for a second there that we didn't have any other questions up here, so I was asking, do you need a motion for this or do you have direction?
I have to have a vote tonight. Well, let's be clear. Mr. City Attorney. The maps that are before the council tonight would be modified by the direction that I'm getting, so I believe it would probably be appropriate to bring this back for a formal vote once the changes are made, because there's quite a few changes that were recommended.
And you have the direction, you need to make those changes and bring them back?
Yeah, I would like to get a...
I'd like to...
Vote, though. It would be helpful.
Comments?
Okay. Yep. Wait. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
At this point, I haven't given any direction, just questions at this point. So on the Transit District East, I like the city council recommendation of 30 DUs and maintaining the 40. On this Transit District West...
Can we real quickly just visit this one? Because I think that there's consensus here on this one.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, everybody agree with that?
Wait, say that again.
What's up on the screen? That the council recommendation is okay, that we change the residential-only area in the yellow to 30 and leave it at what the council recommended? From what I heard tonight, everyone's okay with that?
I think everybody's okay with that. But on Transit District West, I would prefer to see that either stay at 40 or, given the information you gave me earlier, maybe lower it to 30 and keep the 45 feet. Because if you look at that area, there's a hill behind it that goes up. And I don't think the transition is going to be a stark there. And that's right in our downtown. And I know that NCTD is, they haven't done anything formally, but they're looking into developing some of their properties. And I believe that our property across the street from the Transit District is probably going to be on the radar for them. So I think that, I think we want to maintain that higher density there. I don't think we want to go to 21 there. I'd like to see 30 at least. And as far as West Gateway Plymouth, I have no problem with the planning commission recommendation. I just, I was wondering, we can't do 30 with the 35-foot, right?
Is it really going to matter now? I mean, I think if you leave it at 20...
I'm okay with the planning commission recommendation on that one. But I have a hard time with Palo Vista. So the yellow, they want to turn that strictly residential, right?
And the council's direction back in February was to do the same. It was just to increase the density to 30 units to the acre, not 21, and increase the building height to 45 feet, not 35 feet.
Okay. Well, I would stick with the council recommendation on that.
So would it be fair to ask for maybe four different votes on the four different areas?
Please.
So that we get a clear direction?
Starting back at...
So the Transit District East, I think there's consensus that what's on the screen here is okay.
Let's see. No. Wait a minute, let's see. Yes. Sorry. I was looking at the wrong one.
Can we do a show of hands?
Sure, if that's sufficient.
Would that help you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so all...
Wait, what's the question?
If the recommendations that are on the screen here, that the yellow areas would be residential only and that they'd be, the density would be reduced to 30 units to the acre and the building height to 45 feet within those areas, and the areas that are not yellow would remain mixed-use and with a density of 40 units to the acre and a height of 60 feet.
Okay.
So which in their agenda is the council recommendation?
Which in their agenda is the council recommendation.
Okay.
All in favor of that?
So do we vote? Yeah. Like hands?
Okay, unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with the land use, the building height, but where... I can be okay with this one.
Okay.
Okay, I can do that.
Show that as a 5-0.
To be clear, we're reducing from 60 feet down to 45 feet, right?
Correct.
And reducing from 40 to 30 DU?
Except in the mixed-use areas.
Except in the mixed-use areas, that's correct. Okay.
Okay, so on that one, so you want to go to...
We're good. Transit District West, there's not total agreement here. I'd be looking for some direction from somebody that wants to...
I think I agree with Councilmember Aguilera on this one with the 30 units and keeping that height at, I think, what'd you say, Councilmember? Deputy Mayor, the 45? Because if that is going to be on NCTD's radar, it's right next to high traffic. I think that's an ideal place to try to get a few more units in. And with those reading numbers, we're going to have to zone for a little bit more. So I think, hey, if you can get a few more units in there, that's an ideal spot that won't disrupt the character too much, especially with the topography of the area over there, like he insists. So that's two for that.
So one of the differences here between the planning commission and the council's recommendation was to change the land use in the neighborhood off of Camino Patricia, where the dogleg is here on the west side, to residential only.
And does that change the area that we're discussing there, the property that...
No, but it would affect the dense, so the density would affect that decision. So the planning commission wanted to split it residential only in the west half and mixed-use in the east half near the transit center. The council's direction was to keep it mixed-use all. I'm okay with changing the density to 30 units to the acre and the building height to 45 feet. I just want to make sure we're clear that we're going to keep it all as mixed-use.
Can we divide the question?
Sure.
I'd like to divide the question in terms...
Keep the 21 feet on that one side.
Yeah. So the first question would be, shall we separate this area into two zones and the area on the left side of our screens be zoned residential at 21 DU per acre?
I completely agree with that.
Are we all in favor of that?
I can agree with that.
For the residential side on the left there.
On the left side.
The west side.
The planning commission was asking if we could split it in half.
That's correct.
Three yeses.
So do you see enough heads shaking?
Can I speak?
Go ahead.
So we have Rodeos right there on the corner, right? And we have that shopping center across the way, across Patricia, right? And so we're really talking about everything behind that commercial center.
We did not include any of the commercial properties in this. It's all residential properties.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I guess.
Okay, I'm okay too.
Okay.
All heads shaking, okay.
So to close this one out, we need to give instruction on the remaining right half, whether we're going to be at 30 or 40 DU per acre, right?
So I have it as maintaining mixed-use with a density of 40 units to the acre and a building height of 45 feet.
Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The only change here was to reduce the density to 21 units to the acre from 30 units to the acre with a building height of 35 feet. I don't think there's really any significant issue.
I prefer the 21 units to the acre.
Okay. Everyone okay with that?
Okay. Councilmember Franklin, you want to say?
I just want to say I agree.
You just want to say yes, okay. And Joe being shaking his head. How about Aguilera, did you shake your head? Yes. All heads shaking, yes.
Thank you. Okay. And Paseo Santa Fe Palo Vista.
Right, nodding, thank you.
So the difference here was the yellow area at 30 for the council, 21 density per the planning commission, and the building height of 35 feet for the planning commission and a building height of 45 feet from the council.
Again, I prefer the planning commission's 21 units to the acre at 35 feet.
I'll second that.
I don't agree with that. I think it should stay at 30 and 45. That's a little island there. It's just, it's got a road on both sides of it. It's part of our downtown.
I agree with Deputy Mayor Aguilera on that one as well. It's real close to the transit center over there. I think it's ideal to keep the 45-foot building height and 30 units. I think if you lower that building height, obviously, you can only get a certain amount of units. So I like the council's recommendation on that one.
So looking to see, I'm looking at John Franklin to see what he's doing.
I suppose along the railroad tracks that is close to the transit. I don't probably have a problem, I could, I could be amenable to that.
It's pretty dense in there right now with houses and things, so yeah, it could be...
Pretty well-developed. I don't think we're going to see a whole lot of applications flying in in this area, so.
And, and there is, and a lot of density there already and you want to increase it by quite a bit. And, and increase the, the height. And their only, the recommendation from, the Planning Commission was the same as ours for residential only use west of Palavista, south of Rincon, and reducing that to twenty-one units to the acre in the residential area only.
Correct, the area in yellow.
Totally, the only, the only part right there, which is already high density. So I don't, I don't want to make it higher density. I don't want to make it worse than it is as far as the impact going in there. So I'm, I'm obviously outgunned here, but I'm going to stick with my no on that.
Okay, so we got, okay, yes, yes? Yes?
I'm sorry, I just had a question for you. We are reducing the maximum density in that area from what it was though, right? I mean, even though we're switching it to thirty dwelling units per acre and we're reducing the building height. I mean, currently it's zoned higher than that, so we're trying to reduce, right?
Correct.
Okay. We're just not reducing as much of the recommendation. Okay, so we are reducing just, okay, yeah, once again. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just, we are reducing, that's one of the things I wanted to point out, as Councilman Green did. But also, I think we want to encourage people to develop these areas, to change the, the area completely. I mean, you know, I don't want to keep it the same. I mean, I hate to say that, but I think that area can be improved for, for the residents. And I think this is, gives developers an opportunity to come in and change that area out.
I agree. So we have three of us. Councilmember Franklin, did you, you're indecisive?
No, I'll go with, I, I support the, the thirty dwelling units. That's what, Councilmember Aguilera, that's what you're, yeah, I'll support that.
So you have four.
Okay.
Okay. The last one?
That's the last one. So it would be nice to have a motion on the ordinance if we could maybe do that.
So moved.
Even if it's four to one.
So have a motion, do I have a...
Second. I'll second, yeah.
The motion is, is exactly what, that we approve it this way? You're going to come back with...
Motion would be to approve it the way that we presented this evening.
According to the decisions we've just made here.
Based on the direction that I received at this very moment.
And you're going to bring us back, final presentation.
And a second.
And I will bring it back for final changes, correct?
Yes. So do we want, are we going to vote?
Formal vote?
Motion and a second? I'm waiting for the, okay, cast your votes, please.
So we can talk more about it when it comes back again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So with that, that takes us to our second public hearing. Hold on here. This public hearing has received testimony on the 2017-18 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So this public hearing is now open. And Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman will introduce the item.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. With me tonight is Amanda Lee, our Housing Programs Manager, and she will be providing the staff report.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The City of Vista receives annual community development block grant, CDBG funds, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. As a recipient of the grant, HUD requires the city to prepare and submit an annual evaluation known as the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAEPER. The CAEPER provides the city an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress made in carrying out its priorities and specific objectives identified in the city's five-year 2015-2019 consolidated plan, which is depicted on the screen at this time, and subsequent annual action plans. This CAEPER summarizes the progress made in the program year 2017, which covers the period from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. In fiscal year 2017-18, a total of 5,058 Vista residents receive social services provided through contracts with various nonprofit organizations. This includes emergency shelter, crime and delinquency prevention programs, support services for seniors, health and services, including mental health and fair housing programs. We also additionally, we completed improvements at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity Resource Center, which included new American with Disability Act ADA complaint accessibility ramp and an ADA accessible terrace. We completed an installation of a new roof at the Jim Porter Recreation Center and we made the final Section 8108, I'm sorry, Section 108 loan repayment. In addition, in 2017-18, the city expended $628,000 of the $770,000 allocated CDBG funds. An additional $211,000 of $852,000 was spent from carryover forward funds, which are prior year unspent CDBG funds. The carryforward activities include improvements at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity and Resource Center, funding for renovations at Bud Williamson Park, and an installation of the new roof at the Jim Porter Recreation Center. Per HUD's guidelines, the CAEPER has been available to the public since September 12th and no comments have been received to date. This concludes my report and we're available to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I was curious about the 5,000 Vista residents that we were able to help out with this. Can you explain a little bit more, go deeper into the, what kind of help that these residents received? And is it 5,000 households or is it 5,000 people?
It's actually 5,000 people that received services. On the slide, you can see they're depicted there. But to give you kind of a little bit more in-depth analysis of what that includes, is out of those services, we did provide, the health services are included with VCC, Vista Community Clinic, that's flu and vaccination shots for youth. And also it includes counseling services as well for VUSD for Palomar Health Services. Emergency assistance, which is 431 people. That includes Alpha Project, which helped 119 outreach to homeless people in Vista streets to provide them with housing navigation services. Also, that's including emergency assistance. It includes five, a little bit over, I'm sorry, 300 people with, through North County Lifeline for backpacks for students and also emergency basic needs for children to ensure that they have access to education. And then senior support services includes our out and about system and also, which is travel to, that's provided through our senior center. And also interface services, which providers, minor, I'm sorry, minor in-home repairs for our seniors as well. And emergency shelter is Operation Hope. So that's kind of a breakdown of the services that were provided within this year.
Very good. And in the fair housing services, what did you exactly...
Yeah, so fair housing is a little bit more in-depth. With that 213, that doesn't mean there's 213 fair housing violations within the City of Vista. We actually do something called testing every year where we test to see what fair housing violations are done. And the City of Vista does wonderful each year. Our testing always shows up that apartment managers, that's not affordable housing, it's, it's just random market rate. Our, we, we have very low violations and they're just random tests. Out of that, a total of six violations were reported, but they were all resolved. The other 200 were tenant landlord disputes. So if someone feels that they're having an issue with a landlord regarding like a ramp they want at their house, if they're need access or just any type of dispute they may be having with a landlord, they can contact our fair housing provider and they'll provide free mediation services to those people. And out of those 213, all cases have been resolved.
Okay, and then as far as this goes right here, what did this, what did we spend on this exactly?
For the fair housing services?
No, for all these...
Okay, I'm sorry, for all the services for our, I'm sorry, so it's 150, I'm sorry, $115,000 was spent on social programs and then $40,000 was spent on fair housing services. So it's up to 15% of the total grant allocation can be spent on public services. We choose to pay fair housing, something that's actually required by HUD. And we really want to expand and spend as much money as we can on public services. So we pay for the fair housing portion out of our administration cost instead of out of public services.
Well, thank you very much for the update.
Councilmember McGreen?
All right. Thank you so much for this report. This is one of my favorite reports because it gets to see what we do, show what we do in the community. So it's fantastic. Question for you, 129 Vista youth, what was the, the name of the program that we helped fund for that?
That, I'm sorry, is our Smart Moves program and that is handled by our Boys and Girls Club. And they do gang reduction services and services to provide to make sure that youth continue to not, you know, have active engagement and have abilities to say no to harmful measures.
Right, well, thank you so much for all of your work on this. I know you work with a nice committee of ours to make all these decisions and allocate all those funds. So I definitely appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great job, as always, on this and the programs offered. I just had one quick question on the health services where it says including mental health. And we served 3,706 Vista residents. In what ways were we including mental health? Or what mental health programs are we providing for our residents?
That is actually handled through Palomar Family Counseling Services. And that's through our Vista Unified, VUSD students will go and counselors may notice some type of behavioral issues with students. And instead of doing, you know, suspensions or something, they'll, they'll bring in Palomar Family Counseling into the schools and they'll find out if there's any underlying needs. And a lot of it, it turns out to be mental health issues. So they'll not only work directly with the student, they'll also work with the families and bring in test managers to make sure and resolve and do a deep dive into that student.
Excellent, I think that's a great program. And I'm very glad that we offer that to our, to our students and to our residents. And with that, I would like to go ahead and move that we adopt or that we approve the performance, a performance report as presented. Thank you very much. And close the public hearing, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a, seeing all the speaking speakers, I'll, I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that takes us to our oral communications. Each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on the agenda. And our first speaker will be Aram Yetzian. Welcome. No, over here, right over here, right there. There you go.
I came here to just ask myself, I helped community for the last ten, fifteen years. I own a boxing gym. And I helped, I helped all the little kids to come up from the street. And all, we have almost eighty families that come and appreciate my gym. And lately, I've been, you know, people asking me how I can make this place get more better and more, to make the community more happy. I've been told by families, I've been appreciated by families because their kids, they go home, they eat, they take shower, go sleep. Because before they play with computers, you know. I'm trying my best for the last fifteen years to keep the kids up from the streets. And lately, our business going down, I've been hearing this school, the kid, they got some frustration problem, they got some mental problem. I've been offering them to come to my gym. I go to school by school, nobody give me attention. And I don't want that, I don't like that. And you personally came to my gym and you know my gym. Even you, we, we are so proud to have you in my gym last ten years ago. I've been still cooperating because I own the property. I make the area look so beautiful. I'm trying my best to keep the neighbors happy. And my, I even work with Alpha Project to help these people come to my gym, give them free, free sessions, free this, free that. But I've been not having help from nobody. I go to school, ask them, please, can you make a book, book camp Saturdays? I got a 6,000 square feet gym and it's open for public and nobody trying to give me help. I pay lots of property taxes and I work so hard, I'm 73 years old. Why nobody can help me to make that gym get boosted up and get, get little fertilized and make that gym get, get better for public? Believe me, I've been taught from so many, so many customers, thank you, Aram, keeping our kids up from the street, please don't leave the gym. Because I'm, you know, if it goes this way, if I don't own the property, I can't even afford to keep up open. Thank God I own the property. Thank God I'm volunteering myself for the kids to get them. If you go on my website, you see what I do for the kids. I got almost 3,000, 4,000 followers and they appreciate me every, I give 10% for military. Gym would come to my gym, appreciate my gym. Because, you know, I'm a mechanic, I've been 50 years mechanic. I turn it to gym to help kids up from the street again and again. I'm doing good for public. I need a little help from city, go to a school district, that school district, I've been hearing just now from two different people, this the high, to other school, the kids, they got problems and they have no place to go. Why not my gym? My gym is 6,000 square feet, I only have 40, 50 people. It, it was almost 1200, it was almost 120 people. They go down because most of them, they run away to Mexico because there was not legal. There was some of them illegal.
Your time, you know, your time is up, sir.
Yeah, I'm going minus minus. I need help from city, I need some ideas, that's what I need.
Well, I, I thank you for what you do for the kids and I, I hope that more people will come to your gym. I, you know, I hope you're successful because you do a good job over there. So I have been there, so.
Thank you.
I wish you luck.
Thank you. I need some consideration, considerations, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Matt LaComte?
Hello, City Council. Councilmember Franklin, hello neighbor. I was watching YouTube this weekend when all of a sudden I saw your face, like a lot of it. I heard you out, I, I listened to the ad. I thought you did a good job explaining that you're a politician. Councilman Aguilera, you know, last time I was here, I offered you an apology. I had to do that. I was pretty sure 99% that I would have to come back and, and take it. But I gave you that chance. I guess I don't understand like why you say, and Mayor Ritter, you did this as well. You didn't think the, the issue SB 54 California Values Act should be on the agenda? But there was nothing in your actions that sort of spoke to those words? And they're kind of empty words? So is this better if you're just straight with the community right from the beginning? Mayor Ritter, I've been speaking to some people, you know, mentioned that I, I talked to the mayor of my city and they don't really follow politics at all. So they asked me like, why did you speak to your mayor? And I let them know, like, well, she voted to abstain. And then after everyone left, she called the meeting back to order and voted again in opposition of what the community wanted. And people who just don't follow politics, immediately they get that bitter taste in their mouth, they start shaking their head, no, 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 no. You know, she knows better than that. It's just kind of a, I don't know, I guess a universal thing that I think in an honorable position, you're a leader of the community and you should have been a little more straightforward or at least acknowledge that. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Kenyatta Leonard?
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak on this. I'm representing my friends as well as the more than 160 people who came to our demonstration regarding your decision about SB 54. Sorry, so I'd just like to read what I wrote. So at a recent city council meeting, we witnessed a disturbing display of detachment and prejudice. We watched as more than 20 members of our community spoke directly to the council, urging them to protect our citizens by upholding the California Values Act, or SB 54. We heard heartbreaking stories of families split apart by deportation, stories of hardworking members of our, our community deported for wanting a better life. We witnessed the fear and pain brought on by these experiences. Fear of coming home to find that a family member has been deported. Fear of reporting crimes and fear of law enforcement. And through it all, we witnessed a council excluding one member that was indifferent to the needs of its community. A council whose members place their own political aspirations over the good of, of Vista. By deciding to write a letter in support of the United States lawsuit against California regarding the California Values Act, you have sent a clear message to our community. Your decision to join in the fight against SB 54... Your decision to join in the fight against SB 54, a law which protects a large percentage of our community, speaks volumes about your character. SB 54 ensures that children do not have to fear deportation at school, that patients at hospitals do not have to worry about being expelled from the country as they recover from sickness, and that police officers cannot inquire about a person's immigration status without a warrant. These provisions strengthen our community, encouraging our youth to attend school, ensuring that our sick seek treatment, and empowering our residents to report crimes, and ensuring our law enforcement officers, and ensuring that our law enforcement officers can focus on keeping Vista safe. We asked you to refrain from writing a letter in support of the lawsuit, though we knew that our pleas would likely go unheard. We asked you to place compassion and humanity over fear and ignorance, and we asked you to remember that your positions as council members are determined by our community. So, I'd like to ask you to please represent our community in the future and to express our disappointment with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of our speakers, so with that, we will go on to remarks. So, I'll start with Councilmember Green.
All right. First of all, thank you all for showing up tonight and staying. It was a nice, short, sweet meeting. Our last meeting adjourned pretty abruptly, and I didn't get to make my remarks, and what I wanted to do is, on September 8th, I completed the memorial stair climb, the 9/11 memorial stair climb, with our Vista firefighters, and I just wanted to take a moment to remember James Michael Gray, who was 34-years-old, a firefighter in the Fire Department in New York. He was called in on the morning of September 11th, called his two daughters to wish him a good day at school. He loved his job as much as he loved his family, that was his passion. The former city bus driver had no qualms about leaving his job when he got the Fire Department New York call in October of 96. He worked hard for him for six years and lost his life on September 11th, 2001, so I would like to dedicate this meeting to James Michael Gray. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin? Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a few things I wanted to report out from the League of California Cities Conference that I attended, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about, and I've reported here before, was about the state's consideration of increasing the base of sales tax from just what we pay sales tax on now, which is goods, but increasing the amount of goods that we pay tax on, but also, including services as well. So, this has been a thing that we've been discussing for about six years now, and Senator Glazer has proposed a California amendment regarding the increase of sales tax and the increase of the base of sales tax. But the League of Cities has taken a position that there needs to be some more analysis done on the impact and how this would transition, so they're actually sending it back out for further review before it comes before us. There were two resolutions that the League talked about, and one was looking at the viability of a ballot measure regarding local control, because the state is clawing away local control from the cities on every level, and so, we're looking at a committee to talk about doing that. And they're also looking at putting together a committee, a research committee, to look at the impacts, both negative, and it was brought up, the positive impacts of rodenticide, before anything is done on that on a statewide level. So, those are the two resolutions that we voted to put through just for further study. And there were several interesting sessions that I attended. One of the most interesting ones was about fire, and that's something that we've had to deal with a lot in our area, in our region, and so, this was a discussion on what to do before the fires, to be prepared for them, what to do as a community, as well as the city during the fire, and a discussion between panelists and cities, and mayors, council members, city managers, community members, of what was happening during the fire, that they needed to deal with, looking back in retrospective for them, what they wish they could have done better, and then, in the aftermath of the fires. So, that was actually very good information. I did take copious notes. I need to finish transcribing them, and I wanted to share those with you, so I'll get those to you. But I wanted to say it was a really great conference, and I appreciated the ability to go, and I, city manager was there, and I appreciated his assistance that I needed along the way. So, Friday was the Public Safety Committee at Sandag, and it was just the annual report on the crime statistics, which were released, as well as some other information from the county jails. So, that's my report. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Yeah, I'd just like to report some good news. So, I've been working with Mr. Connolly and the staff at Vista Community Center, and Healthy, it's HCHR, which is Healthy Cities, Healthy Residents, and one of the big requests that they have been having is asking for shelters. I think some have spoke to it here at council meetings at Townsite in North Santa Fe, and I just wanted to report that NCTD was able to secure a grant, and those two properties do qualify, and we will be getting some shelters and improvements to those bus stops on Townsite and North Santa Fe, both on the, I guess, east side and west side, however that work, or north and south, I'm not sure, but across from Royal Liquor and the other side, so that's exciting. It's going to take a little bit of time, because it's not only incorporating those two bus stops, but it incorporates some stops in Escondido and Oceanside, so, once they get it all done, it's probably going to take several, well, close to 28 months to get it completely done, so hopefully, we can move ours up. I believe there are federal grants and state grants that take some time to implement. It's good news.
Good news. I always like to hear good news. I have a couple announcements here, comments. I'm pleased that crime is still heading in a downward trend again this year. Sandag's mid-year report found that overall crime rate in the City of Vista is 5% lower than it was in 2017, which is good news. Thank you to the Vista Sheriff's Department for keeping our city safe. We appreciate them. The complete report is online at cityofvista.com, if you want to see that complete report. Tickets are still available for the Moonlight's Last Summer Production Chicago, which ends this Saturday. Great show. It's this Saturday, September 29th, is the last night of it. Ticket information is online at moonlightstage.com, and you can find out what tickets are available. And lastly, registration begins October 3rd for the City of Vista's youth basketball program, which is open to boys and girls in K through 12 grades. Register at the recreation office or online at vistasrecreation.com, and those are my announcements for the evening, and I'll give it to city, my city manager here.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items. National Ride Share Week is October 1st through October 5th, so if you're interested in that, you can go to icommute.com to learn more about ride sharing. And FEMA is going to be testing its wireless emergency alert system. This is going to happen on October 3rd, which is a Wednesday, at around 11:00 a.m. So, folks that have cell phones will receive a special tone and an emergency text message. There's nothing you need to do, just accept it, it is just a test. And then, lastly, on October 13th, there is, the Vista Fire Department is celebrating National Fire Prevention Week, and at station number five, which is at 2009 South Melrose, they are open to the public from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., so they invite families, kids, take tours of the station, meet the firefighters, so it's a great day. Thank you.
Super. That's city attorney, anything down there? Daryl Piper?
I would simply say that Chicago at the Moonlight is absolutely excellent. Go see it.
I would second that. I second that. How about our city clerk and our assistant city clerk? Nothing down there? Okay, with that, nothing else? We are adjourned at 6:50.